Any changes, Your Honor?
No changes.
What's to approve?
Again.
Yes.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickpocket.
Yes.
Stucker. Yes. Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation. Attention to the communication stating 2858 Resolution Direct, excepted proposal for purchase $5,860,000 some sewer revenue funding out of loan notes series 2021 and approving with form authorized execution of the purchase agreement. That will turn over to Maggie at Spear Financial.
Hi there, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come virtually to your meeting. I am doubled up on meetings this evening, and this seemed to be the best option for us. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. In front of you, you have a proposal from DA Davidson and Company of Des Moines, Iowa, who we had worked with on the refunding of your existing sewer revenue bonds from 2016. Those bonds were callable, and we are presenting to you tonight a proposal for $5,840,000, which is the principal amount, a little bit less than what is in your agreement. And the reason for that, or on your agenda, the reason for that is there is re-offering premium, which is the amount of money that the underwriter is going to give you upfront to buy the deal. So we're able to refund $6 million of bonds outstanding with $5,840,000, along with paying the cost of issuance. The new interest rate on this bond issue will be 1.1097%, which is a phenomenally low interest rate, given the fact that these are sewer revenue bonds based on the revenues of the system. By refunding these 2016 notes, you are saving a gross savings of $273,311, or a net present value savings of approximately $237,000. That's a 4% savings. We really don't recommend anything unless we can save 2% to 2.5%. The interest rates are going to be at 2% all the way down, and the refunded debt that you're taking out, what you're refinancing started at about a 2.25, went down through a 2.25. So it doesn't sound like it is a lot of interest savings on page two. But on page three, we go ahead and show you what that new debt service schedule looks like. And page four is where we come up with the total savings. There is going to be some savings, but the main part of the savings is going to come in the last year. We discussed with the city council, or with the administration, about shortening this up for one-year faster repayment, which means you don't necessarily save anything in the next few years, but by eliminating the June 1st, 2030 payment altogether, which is where we then recognize all of the savings. Because these are revenue bonds, and they are going to be in the conventional municipal market, you do have to fund a debt service reserve fund, and I believe you've talked about that, and you are going to fund that with cash. That is one other way that we were able to save money on this deal, so that you did not have to go ahead and borrow for that reserve fund. We think it's phenomenal interest savings. We did give you some comparables, because this was not a competitive sale at this time. Those comparables, what we're looking at is the yield to the yield that we are seeing from the final numbers in the bond issue that was provided to us and what we were negotiating with DA Davidson. Those yields started at 0.23, meaning that today's interest rates are really 0.23, down to about a 1.2. Again, we said those interest rates are at 2%. The difference between the interest rate and the yield is what the underwriter has to pay you in that money upfront, or that premium. That is how we're able to refinance more debt with a lower principal amount. And for you, that generates a great amount of savings, as mentioned, approximately $237,000 of net present value savings. I would answer any questions that you have, but we do recommend that the city would move forward with this refunding and awarding the bonds to DA Davidson and Company of Des Moines, Iowa, at a true interest rate of 1.1097%.
Any questions for Maggie? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's to approve? Call roll.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickpocket.
Yes.
Stucker. Yes. Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Hey, next up, B 2857 Resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding sewer revenue refunded capital loan notes series 2016 in the city of Boone, state of Iowa, dated December 1, 2016, and directing notice to be given. Second, call roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickpocket.
Yes.
Stucker. Yes. Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Sign.
Okay, next up, C fiscal year 2020 audit presentation, Kevin Houseman.
Good evening. We got done with the audit a couple of months ago, and seeing the bonding refunding was really interesting, because one of the important parts of the audit is who looks at the audit? Not just the citizens of the community, but underwriters look at it. I had an underwriter call from Dallas that was interested in the bonds, and we talked through the financial statements, because Iowa's financial statements in the cities are a lot of like, Boone is on a cash basis, most are on accrual in other states. And so he wanted to know the differences, and it was really an interesting conversation. But what impressed me was, here's an underwriter from Dallas interested in Boone, Iowa bonds. He's looking at the audit, he's looking at the financial statement, and he was impressed by that. And so that was comforting to me in a lot of ways, knowing that somebody else is looking at it, that they're considering looking at bonds from Boone, Iowa, and all those things. That was very impressive, and I thought you should know about that, because they're not going to look at them if they're not in good shape. So it was good to see that. The other thing we look at, or other people look at, is compliance aspect of the audit. All audits in Iowa are done the same way for cities, and they're all established by the state auditor's office. We all follow the same procedures, we all test the same things. And so compliance is a huge part of city audit, of governmental audit. You know, it's more compliance than anything else, so spend hours and hours on the compliance aspect of it. And it's the simple things, our payroll taxes paid on time, it's the budget, all the things associated with the budget, done like they were supposed to. And this year, we found no compliance issues whatsoever, which is outstanding as well. The other big thing this year's audit was the effects of pandem. Starting at this time a year ago, we had no idea what the effect was going to be for the city. Still some uncertainty, obviously, now, but we had a lot better idea of the effects hotel motel tax, it affects sales tax. Boone was really, really fortunate. They had a building boom in the last year, it's still ongoing. And that's going to be make the property tax base much larger as we get on the road. So the effects for the city weren't as much as some cities were. And so having the ability to be conservative in nature and not overspending, and staying within the budget you established, again, when once-in-a-lifetime type of things happen, you're ready for it. And so again, that was reassuring, it should be reassuring for you as well, citizens. So it didn't have a huge impact, and the impact it did have is going to be fairly short-term. But otherwise, as we went through the audit, we were really pleased. We, like everybody else, pretty much did the audit remotely. That's the way the state auditor is operating right now, and you know, it's efficient enough. We don't get to see the interaction with employees and staff. They probably like it that way. You know, we're not bothering very much, we try not to anyway, but it went very, very well. So we were really pleased with that as well. So I don't have a lot, but it went very well.
Any questions?
Ellen? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Boone County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Chris.
Well, thank you, Councilman Mayor, for letting us come in tonight and talk to you. I'm sure you guys know the background of how we got here and why we're here. So we are looking to, or have started our new organization that's obviously Andy's going to talk about and give you some history on, and then I'll follow up and give you guys some stuff to take with you before the next hour.
My name's Ian Bartlett. Most of you know me, I work out at Legis State Park. But the other members of our new board of convention and visitors bureau, we most of all here, Donna Cottington, information on our blog, Travis Stevenson from Boone City College Bureau, Rachel Kirklofsen from DMAP, and Mark Schneider from the Iowa Arboretum. We've come along with the Convention and Visitors Bureau from a standpoint of we're launching our new loan organization. We have our articles in the corporation, our file, as a 501(c)(6) organization. If you want to go to the next slide if you can. That's our new logo, the front one, I'll come up here again in a little bit. But that's who we are. These images, a lot of these images in this slideshow are taken right from our visitor guide. Next slide, please. You'll see where we're at. So like I said, we're 501(c)(6) status is already secured with the state. We are in a position where we're hitting the ground running. So as far as resources go, Chris has copied our visitor guide to pass out to all of you. We probably got that done and published and ready for this upcoming year, this current year. We're cultivating partnerships with other CVVs, other organizations, even our own businesses and attractions, to help make ourselves stronger, and then also with the cities of our county. Next, please. So where are we going? This is going to allow us, our standalone status is going to allow us to pursue different projects. And we're working with Rotary Club on phase two of the Welcome Train, building a Welcome Kiosk where we distribute information, some self-guided orienteering opportunities there, doing promotions that we otherwise weren't able to do before. And different opportunities, like there's a Sports Authority grant that we can pursue now with that tax status. Next, please. So how do we get there? We basically can't do it alone, and we need help from our cities, our county, and Boone especially. Boone is the heart of the county, and well, that's identified in our visitor guide, that's important to all of our attractions. For us, as an organization for stability, for longevity, looking at funding-wise with hotel motel tax, we would really like to be able to budget and be consistent and stable at a rate of, if we can work out, you know, a contract with you guys at a rate of about 60% for five years at a time. But then at that time, we can reevaluate where we're at and provide benchmarks of how we're doing. But ultimately, with the help of that hotel motel tax, that's how we thrive. That's how we'd be able to bring people here to help build that tax base. We're more pleased. So like I said, there's our new logo. We're, we as a group, individuals within the group, and the attractions that we represent, the businesses we represent, we know our clientele, we know our visitors. But as a whole, we also know how to promote our visitors from our attractions to the other attractions, to the other businesses in the county. And we, in our name, it says the Visitors Bureau, Convention and Visitors Bureau. Really what we're trying to do is build fans of Boone County, of towns in our county, the attractions in our county and business, and help build that in there. And if you guys have any questions for us, we'd be, we're happy to answer.
Do you have a name yet with the chamber?
Not yet.
Is that certain that I said?
I think so, yeah. Mark has been talking with the chamber, I think he's coming to resume.
It's coming, okay.
Yep.
And what other, can I ask some other partnerships you're going to have?
We've been talking with AAM CVV, as far as that goes, Central Iowa Expo is another one. Chris has actually housed out at Central Iowa Expo, our business office address. So that's kind of where our home base will be, but those are our main ones, in addition to more communities in the county.
Any other questions? What?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I'll just give these to you. This was the research plan that we put together that got us to where we are, and the visitor guides that are going to be within the community, and there are some that are already out now, so. Yeah, as soon as we get that agreement from the chamber, we're ready to go. We just need to get back to business.
That sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, E Senate Balloting for April 19, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Consider the sale of property, which is described below. Second, call roll.
Pickpocket.
Yes.
Stucker. Yes. Ray. Bird.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay, House Balloting for April 19, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. On the proposed plant specifications, form of contract, and estimate cost for 2021 water treatment plant removal of blind residential project. So, second, call roll.
Stucker. Yes. Ray. Bird.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Pickpocket.
Okay, number four, report to standing committees, policy administration, BJ, no report there. Public safety, transportation, Steven.
That was a great comment, I think it's a good tactic, I don't think it's going to be different from what I've had.
Same as Larry years ago.
So I made motion for the, for that.
Call roll.
Ray. Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Sign. Mormon.
Yes.
Pickpocket.
Yes.
Stucker. Yes.
You told me, Stephen.
I'm only during the 4:30 minutes, when we're going to report, I'll leave from that one.
Next up, we have Economic Development Committee, Greg.
Yes, Your Honor, Dan Paulhane and AAM CDC is here to give us an update.
Well, good evening, Mayor Johnson, Dan Paulhane here, Lieutenant Perdus Riner, I've got a handout here that I'll share as well for you this evening. We promise to report every quarter. I'm telling you, the first quarter of the year is going fast, despite we should be fortunate of being wintered. But it feels like we just kicked this off, and here we are tonight, after three months. I have to say, we've been overwhelmingly surprised, and pleasantly surprised by the response we've received.
Yes.
We've made a number of key contacts, a lot of your leaders in town, a lot of your business leaders. Brendan will talk about the Business Retention and Expansion Program that we promised inside our contract here in a moment. We've connected with DMAP, the school district, your hospital CEO. I think I've mentioned almost everyone here on the city council in this wonderful air flight. And it's been really refreshing to see the interest and enthusiasm for this opportunity. And also tell you that last week, I think there were six of us, maybe seven of us, that were here for an afternoon, walking your downtown. And that was really also very invigorating. We put that up to the guys, that we were here on behalf of the mayor, the council, and the city of Boone to gather feedback from downtown businesses. And I think most of us had some appointments, we're just droppings, right? I think most of us had at least one appointment, we sat for an hour and listened to somebody talk about what they saw for downtown Boone, what was on their mind, or how they put in COVID. You know, we found that in our organization with a lot of the businesses in Scotty County, was that just asking a lot of our businesses how they were doing. We didn't have topical solutions for them, but it gave them an outlet to provide kind of feedback, if you may, a little bit, on how COVID has treated their business. And so that was refreshing and encouraging, and those were actually very easy conversations as we moved up and downtown. Actually, we found a few folks that weren't open, or they were closed for the afternoon, applying on our zone for very positive experiences and very positive reflection upon the city of Boone for taking the initiative to do that. So I thought that was good, I wanted to pass that along. We've also seen some project work, when I say project work, I'm talking about economic development opportunities. Economic development opportunities that express, you know, sites or a building here in your community. That's been positive as well. Our team was up to speed on your infrastructure, up to speed on your buildings and sites and things of that nature inside Boone City Limits. And we were in the role. We were in the role, we started the year, but we put it to action as well in the first three months. And that's also been very positive. Brenda's going to talk a little bit about workforce, and she's going to talk about business retention and expansion. But I can tell you that by and large, this has been a really, really good experience for us. We hope it has been for you. We hope that you're hearing things on the street, good or bad. If they're bad, let us know, and we'll go meet those people. The best way we can build relationships is by giving people head-ons, and talking to people about the work that we're doing on your behalf. So I'll stop there. I haven't been to all your meetings, this is the first quarter, but I see enough of them to know that gravity is important, so I'll step back. Brenda, please.
I've had a lot of good comments on our partnership from a lot of business people and a lot of residents, so very pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I definitely love the things that Dan has already said about the reception that we've received from your business community. And so in the last quarter, I've actually been here once or twice a week. And my, the things I'm going to visit a little bit about are the workforce initiatives, which we, doesn't matter if you're a small business or a big business, workforce is on your mind. And so you've had a whole day's side of a program to support relocation to your community. And so we now receive all of the leads that are all interested in Boone County. And so we actively, Mark is going with the three-step campaign, you can see the number of leads there and the amount of follow-up emails. And I'm really, 42% is a really great rate for our emails, and so I feel really good about that. We had a better relationship with your school district already, and so it's been fun to actually build on that relationship. And as we speak tonight, we have either one or two students that we're actually coordinating transportation on to get them to a welding class, to actually upscale to welding. So we'll be excited to see those folks go through the class, you have a lot of welding needs in the community. But again, without a great partnership of the school, we wouldn't have been able to probably connect with those students. So we are doing a lot of upscale training in the areas of welding and CNA and manufacturing. And so we're promoting those opportunities through the Facebook page, and we're signing those folks up. And we'll continue to do that about the next six months. Our goal would be getting 60 students into upscale training. And then the job board, which is kind of been the first thing we rolled out. You can see a little bit about the searches on the job board, the number of openings. Again, those are between our two counties, again, but that brings attention to the job seekers as well as the employers. And so you can see the number of posts and things that we're doing related to the jobs boards. So again, I'd ask your help to help get the word out. It's free, it's at no charge to the job seeker or to the employer. And again, you just need that to be utilized on behalf of, for everybody. Then on the backside is the actual recap of the official VRD visits that we've done here in Boone. We've conducted 13, we actually got a few more than we had anticipated. And I've got about three more I'd like to wrap up here in the next couple of weeks, just so we can get a first good base side of everybody. But based on the first 13 visits, you can see kind of where they're at in terms of hours of operation, how their business is doing. It's exciting to me that, you know, you've got about 75 plus eight that are either growing or emerging. That's a very powerful statement, have your industries with really, you know, a small share in the maturing or declining market. You know, you can see about the succession plan, that's important. I think at some point in time, those will be, continue to have conversations with your business and industry, so we can see that number get up. Supply chain is a problem with all of our businesses, just to give you a sense of where they're feeling on that. And 92% are back to where they were ahead of COVID, which is good for your community, it's good for our region. And again, if you have any questions at all about the visits, again, you were welcome. In almost all instances, we were at over our point of intent, because they had a lot to talk about. Want to talk about the good things and the bad things that are going on, and excited to continue to get out there and visit your businesses. So with that, I'm sure, Janet, I'll take any questions you might have, and leave you the report. If you have any questions on the backside, and you're looking to review it, Bill can get you in touch with us. We're pretty easy to find, so.
Any questions?
If you agree for pressure that this retention and expansion visits are focused on your primary employers, so your interstate commerce organizations and companies that are training outside of state violence. So that's where the state violence focuses, that's where we focus the local level, too. I will tell you, look forward to a presentation from our team, probably in the next two to three months, kind of a downtown analysis that a couple of our folks have conducted. They walked around with Bill and Frank here a few weeks ago, and we've got some ideas on some funding solutions for some building facade improvements. You've got some programs already in place as a city, but there are other resources outside of the community that we think you can leverage to do some really good things here downtown as well. So we'll hear more about that here in the next, probably the next 30 to 60 weeks.
One quick question. Out of all these metrics, where do you think we have the most opportunity to grow?
Well, what I would tell you, at least in my visits, there's a couple that have penny expansions. And so those will be conversations that we're making sure that we're staying up on and ensuring that we're following back up. I think really two really strong classes, the one is that we need additional capital investments as well as jobs. So that's one of them that maybe is not reflected here, but you know, I think there's been some conversation around technology, and what I would tell you is, for the most part during these visits, I think they're pretty happy with their technology. I didn't hear that with some of my downtown surveys, but. And this is the type of stuff that we like, is that when they answer, when we say, "Would there be any reason at all that you wouldn't be considered for an extension?" 90% of them said that you wouldn't be considered. Whether or not they're actually going to expand, this is higher than I have seen in other places that I've been. So a lot of times, you know, just the tight workforce or land constraints. But 90% is, was something that jumped out at me when we were putting your report together. Dan, I know you've looked at this, too.
Yeah, we're not really surprised that there are projects out there that will be coming forward at some point in time. You know, even in markets, markets looks large, and then our market's a distant region here. The vast majority of your job growth is going to come from the people that are already there. And so what we need to do is make sure we're in contact with them, plugging Bill in and others where they need to plug in, so those industries understand there's a desire to help them grow here rather than someplace else. And so I've said it a lot, oftentimes it's funny to cut the ribbon on a brand new shiny company, right? I went all along, here's a three young names is growing, or Fairway Distribution is growing. And those things are so important to our markets, because for the most part, they'll always be there, right? You know, so take care of the people that are always going to be there, and if you can bring someone new along once in a while, that's great, too. But make sure you're never bringing new people to the market, or new businesses to the market, at the expense of people that are already here. Now, there's random numbers, and you're getting people like Brenda and I talked about, of something, 90% of your job growth every year is going to come from the people that are already here. And so we better take care of those folks.
I've got any more?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You too. Okay, next up, number five, harbor reports, bill of defense debt, no report. Finance officer on rail. City attorney, yeah.
No report.
Director of public court, John House.
Yes, Your Honor. In your package, you'll find three proposals to do some sanitary shorelining. One will be paid for on this year's budget, and two of the other will be paid on the next year's budget. But we're going to do them all at one time, so we'll get more bang for our buck, of course, we. um, and each proposal's in a different section of town. We have three different phases going on right now. And one's in each part of those pages. Staff will come to three hotspots in areas and put them for the, the line map on. Yeah, and then back in around on the floor too. I just need your approval.
About how much total distance are we talking about pipe here? All part.
It's only twenty. Two thousand, the two, one thousand, about, about five thousand.
So about eleven thousand.
Yeah. No, about five thousand there, two thousand there, two thousand there, two thousand. And then four thousand, so.
Nine.
Nine, eleven, twelve. These are all in our hospitals. They help keep the eye on it. It's all but.
I think this is one of your objectives.
Er.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Sucker. Yes, right?
Yes.
And one other thing, um, we are going to order my dump truck. Remember at the beginning of the year, we was going to do the ratio and everything, more budget support scrubbing. I talked to Andre and Bill and we have three lines to order on our new dump truck proposal. Uh, we did sort of work it out. Thank you, thank you.
All right, city engineer, Dan.
Mr. Senator, six days. Uh, the first is a resolution of authorizing the future contract in construction. At earlier meeting, we, we've done the notice of awards. I'll put contract, get it ready now. So we'd like to get assigned so we can start construction this summer. And then this is a year-long project. So hopefully it will be done by next summer. This, uh, this is a one point six billion dollar project.
So move. Second, all along.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Sucker. Yes, right? Bird.
Yeah.
Okay, the number two is a resolution, uh, with NSA professional services. This is for the new school site. This is, uh, uh, agreeing to do a study to look at the traffic flow, to look at some of the public infrastructure necessary uh, to do a cost assessment of the streets. So that we have some idea how this is all gonna come together. This will help us better plan this roadway and infrastructure study. Infrastructure improvements. And the school has indicated that they would pay for half of this. The total cost is twenty-one thousand five hundred.
And is the, the school get all the information you had asked for? Please, uh, that last meeting. Do you get the authorization that you had asked for from their engineer?
Yeah, we've provided that information.
Yes. Oh, we're good. We're still planning on working in conjunction with their contractors, right?
Yeah, this is just to give us some idea of what the cost of those ways is. So that we can compare it to their cost and make sure that we're not being overcharged. And also looks at the traffic flow. So that we can better understand that, some of the intersections.
So when you sent them that information, Dan, did you include the sidewalk and stuff we discussed? Is that part of that plan?
Um, yeah, we said the existing lands for Hancock, farther to the west, will show sidewalks.
Okay.
And it's a thirty-one foot wide street. Dirt, uh, dirt, dirt.
Does that sidewalk run all the way to Stenner or just that section in front of the school?
That's something that we would have on the side, which we're still early at preliminary phase at this point.
Well, it, I, it'll affect the cost.
It will, yes.
So, I mean, it's probably something we need to decide longer.
I think for the, the section of the street that we're building, that east-west section from what we said, we would include sidewalk both on the north and the south side. Whether that continues in the south, the sidewalk on the south continues to the south, I don't know.
But we would need that for the future residential development, right?
The section of the Hancock will have it, right?
Yeah.
Or in front of the school, perhaps, for sure. It's that section from that heads, uh, north. That, yeah, that section there, whether or not the school puts a sidewalk in to match what we want in the section.
Right.
I would hope they would do that. Beneficial to their students.
Right, and I think as a result of that meeting, those are some of the things that we communicated with them that we need to know, so. Right. Tell the deal, DLR gets back with all those cost estimates. Uh, I don't know that council can make an informed decision on as far as the cost, but what it is gonna be.
I just wanted to make sure they were on the same page as we are. From that meeting, well.
I think we are.
As close as it could possibly be.
It appeared to me that we were.
I, I thought we were too.
Right. And just one other point of, we're working with them, that there's no sense having two contractors doing the roads, so. They will put it together as the whole road from here, here, and then here. And then we would, whatever council decides on what their share is or what they're gonna do, we would pay our share. That way there's only one contractor and economy scales and makes sense for that.
We'll, we'll get a better price based on doing it that way. Hey. Boom. Second. All the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Sucker. Yes, right?
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, want to say to Chief Adams.
No report, your honor.
Uh, Chief Leebel.
No report, your honor.
Uh, next up, city administrator, Bill.
Thank you, sir. I have a few. The first one is the liability and workers' compensation. Uh, that is in the consent agenda to be approved, but I wanted to go over a little bit because it was a pretty good increase. Uh, the increase for the workman's comp was thirty-seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. For the liability insurance was just under thirty-nine thousand and then a little bit of an increase for cyber insurance. And as I tell you what those increases are and they are substantial, I will tell you that for the last year, the city, uh, had approximately three hundred and, uh, forty-four thousand in claims through the insurance. And of that, two hundred and twenty-six thousand some odd dollars were related to deracial. I don't know that we have total amount that we've received so far for deracial, but it's substantial. And the report that they had, that's the number they gave. So we got quite a bit of money back from E O C. Not bad, but because of the claims that we've had. Uh, workman's comp claims, uh, for the last year was sixty-one thousand. And then we also received a dividend check of twenty-one thousand four hundred and twenty from E O C this year. That's all I have. I just wanted to share that information with you, ask if you had any concerns or any questions I can answer. Otherwise, that is in the consent agenda for approval. Okay, my next item is, as you know, I talked to you all a few months back about the chamber changing the dates of Puffa Milling. Uh, it's a different date to try to improve the festival. They made that change and this year it's gonna be August sixth and eighth. With, with this has dumped some, uh, extra costs. So what I'm asking tonight is permission to, uh, provide five thousand dollars in assistance to the Puffa Milling Day Committee uh, for the, uh, festival this year, August sixth, seventh, and eighth, to hopefully ensure or help that it's, you know, the change of date and everything is, is a success. As you know, when you change things up a little bit, where it's been something for a long time, there is some additional costs and or some concerns. We certainly think that the, or I think they think that, you know, this is best for the festival. I do, quite frankly. And so I'll provide this money if you approve through, uh, the economic fellow or budgets. So I'm asking permission to provide five thousand dollars assistance to the Puffa Milling Day for this year's festival.
Can I tell you what that is for?
Yeah, it's gonna go majority for tribal. Uh, they couldn't get the regular particle. And so they have a different one and it's actually a better, probably more professional one, but it costs more. So it's gonna go toward those costs.
This would be one time.
Yes. Well, for this year, yes. Now, will they request something in this year twenty-two for the next year? I, I mean, I don't wanna say, say no, they won't, but, but.
They have a question.
That's my concern. Yeah, no.
They request every year, pretty much, and they, you know, the past, we lost, uh, the, we did get, we used to get some, then we didn't. And we have police officers at work to bear at hand. We've got city workers helping. We got a lot of those that actually, uh, say away about five thousand, we actually, uh, it's money. I, I mean, I just, from my perspective, this year, you know, hotels on motel, it's no go, obviously. But anytime that you draft for this one-time thing, I, I would not be comfortable having come out of anything other than hotels on motel for the first time.
I understand. And that would be considered if they made that request. This really was, uh, this was me bringing this request forward this year because they changed the date and I think supported this community that this festival will be successful, so. But I will not worry for the fact that council wants it in future years, they would have to make that.
I do think it would be better having it on a separate weekend than super nationals. It gives the hotels opportunity to fill out two different weekends rather than, uh, sorry, we're booked, you know.
So we're fairly confident that this is gonna be a go.
Oh, oh, it's far as COVID and all that. Or, I don't know.
Uh, Kurt is on here, if you.
Kurt? Is it a go?
Kurt, are you there? Okay.
All of yous are the go. All of yous are the go.
He's, he's signing in here. Hold on. Or he's.
And, and again, I think the money wouldn't be really still true until, as it gets closer.
Yeah, I think it's, yes, we're not getting.
Right, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Right.
So if something would happen that
Then, yes.
Station would come out with a return. And we wouldn't do it.
Right, okay.
So, I think, move. Second. All the roll.
Norman.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Sucker. Today. Right?
Yeah.
Bird?
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Thank you for that. My next item is the city wellness program. Uh, we are getting some additional employees that are joining it, which is very good. Uh, for, I think for our health insurance. Currently, you, the city supplies out of the insurance fund, twelve thousand dollars for that program. I would like to request an increase of two thousand dollars, fifteen thousand to support it. And so that there, there are some programs that the committee wants to do that, uh, we're having more join. We need additional money to, to, uh, make those programs happen. So I would request it for us to finish a three thousand dollar bump to fifteen thousand for the wellness program.
Second. Call the roll.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Sucker. Yes, right?
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
My next one is the city border system. I've talked to a few folks up there about this before. Um, so every, twice a year, the border systems are broke down for maintenance, everything. That'll happen in April. But when we do it this April, there are two expansion valves that need to be replaced. Uh, this will help, uh, the smooth transition from the east border to the west border. So they're running at the same amount of time. Uh, right now, one corridor, because of the problems, running longer than the other one will equal that out. Uh, the time to do it is when the borders, borders are broke down for the maintenance. And we do not have this budgeted for, so it would require, uh, additional money through a budget amendment. But I will tell you, with some challenges that we've had to replace, uh, that maintenance line item is gonna be over anyway. And we're gonna have to request a budget amendment. I think that'll come in one May, uh, for, for this festival year. So I'm asking, uh, permission to go ahead and get that work done for, uh, the fee or the cost of your outpouring for recalls. And maintenance thing, it needs to be done, so.
So. All the roll.
Sucker? Yes, right?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is in the consent agenda, there's a Twenty-Second Street affidavit. This has to do with when, uh, there was a title search being run or cleared. I think that's the proper word. Or, or, you know, we're working on the project for Twenty-Second and Lynn Street, uh, with higher property management. So they have, we've got an abstract that we've given them and they were doing the title search. These leases came up in that search, uh, which caused them a concern. But, uh, Jim has looked into it and determined, one, there are no, there's no formal drill ever for these leases. They're invalid at this time, so poses no problems to title search. Did I explain that right?
Well, that goes plan A.
So, so we're requesting that, and it's in the consent agenda, I just want to explain it to you. Ask the mayor to put a signature on that, that there were no well or there are no leases ever done back there for drilling or any type of investment. That is, I do not need a vote because it is in the consent agenda. A couple of other things real quick. So we have done the stairs at city hall out front, redone, redid those. Does the council want any, any input in how we landscape it out there? If not, I'm gonna turn it over to JR's boys at Spark. Talking about just some bushes or maybe a couple of trees or something like that, nothing extravagant. But that's what our plans are less, uh, even like something else out there. So.
Sounds good.
Okay. And last thing, uh, we got the report of the audit tonight. Uh, that really goes to the work of Andrea in her group and the finance department, as well as department heads, making sure that they run their departments appropriately. So for me, and thanks to the department heads and Andrea, we're gonna be good audit. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, number six, consent, consent agenda. I didn't know consent agenda, you like roads and stuff, sadly, not any local group. Second. All the roll.
Right?
Yeah.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes.
Number seven, I have, Stevie, number eight, I have no comments. Number nine, any council comment? We do have one, Stevie.
Um, at one of the previous meetings, I sent around a proposal for rental costs for the green space and asked for input on naming that space so we could get that done prior to kickoff, which we hope will be with River Valley this year. Um, haven't heard very much input from any council members. So what I would like to do is take that proposal that I did, if you have any changes or anything that you see, email me. If you have any proposals for a name, email me and I'll put that together for, uh, council. I think we had to pass it by resolution, right? If you, and if you think that the city should handle this space, let me know. We just need to make those decisions and get this moving forward. Did I miss anything? That's it, right?
Are they?
Um, I, I'd just like to make it simple when we name it, uh, Boon Community Green Space or something for that. You know, everybody, everybody knows that space by the green stain.
Yeah.
So if we named it the Boon Community Green Space, everyone's gonna know where it's at, what it is. So, uh, just let me know, send me an email. I'll, I'll get that proposal put together for to get to go for resolution for the next week.
Right.
If I could, um, we, we talked about where the roads were road through now. Julie, uh, JR's administrative assistant runs those human parks. Is that, it kind of makes sense to us that that's where we run those through? Is everybody good with that? And JR, I've talked to him, he's good to go. Been a good sport about that. He said that, yeah, they'll absolutely.
Absolutely.
So that's, is that the direction you wanna go? Okay.
That's unique. Heard anything on the grant?
Yeah, because you can take it to the park.
Well, I'll put that, I'll put that, I suppose I'd get it, get it to Bill so they'd be able to use it again for the next one.
I don't know if it's been officially designated legally as a park.
I just asked a question. Say somebody rents, it's not a big deal, but say somebody rents it and then they have alcohol on there. Because you can go to one of our parks, take alcohol, have a picnic or whatever the case may be. Just wanna make sure. So I make sure we, we talk about this, but you're gonna allow that downtown, which I don't, I'm not saying I have a problem with it. Are you seeing that people water it downtown? I, I think we need to clarify.
We, that probably should be alcohol free down there.
Yeah, we came up with that part of discussion in the early part of it.
Yeah, okay.
And the thing we came up with was when it's a special event like Puffer or the River Valley, it'd be on a case by case basis.
Okay.
So that way it would not be.
I'm not opposed to the. You guys.
No, but we were also. About to over clothe in the local downtown.
So they call us to rent, and he's the, hey, you need to understand.
Yeah.
Here's the rule.
Yeah. I know that Boom, the brewery and other places have rented areas and have their brew here and stuff like that. So you might wanna say, give your request up to the council, you still need your alcohol, you know, maybe.
See, they have alcohol licenses.
Well, yeah, if you have an, if you have an alcohol license, that has to be approved anyways through you folks, if you're gonna sell on premises.
So I think on a case by case basis, it probably needs to be controlled. I don't know if the two chiefs have any input in this at all.
Say some band wants to rent it, and they say, hey, you wanna, we're having a concert.
Well, I, I think the area then would have to be, where the alcohol is gonna be, would have to be defined by some sort of a barrier or a fence.
We can do that case by.
And that can be a case, okay, but I think it, otherwise, I think you're just saying, okay, you can just carry it all over. I think it would need to be a fence put up. For example, if you get it on Eighth Street, like to the alley from story, there need to be some sort of fences, control, things like that.
Second. There was something in you, right?
Not trying to.
Other parks, you can bring your own in and that's where we'll have to.
Right, yeah.
Might have to put something, might put something code. Yeah.
The thing, bring it in?
No, that's, they can't bring it into that park specifically, with other parks, you're allowed to bring your own alcohol in, a code, whatever.
I don't know how we just make this one, we have. Yeah, I mean, I don't think the park, you're, I don't think the park, that park has been designated officially as a.
No, we intentionally have not given it the park status, keep it under control.
Right. I don't wanna hurt his life by saying never any alcohol, I don't, maybe it'd be a.
Well, we, we decided case by case because I think the conversation turned to food trucks, festivals, music, and we got.
Can't you just classify it as private events?
I don't care.
I think it's something statute. Yeah, do you want staff to do some research on? Come back?
Sorry.
To clarify the use of the space.
Right.
If it's a concert.
So A, for example, they have that.
Half shell.
Yeah.
They have alcohol there, food trucks.
Parks, right?
They gotta do all the business, so. I don't wanna hurt it, I just wanna have some rules.
Because it's gonna be used.
Yeah.
What, why don't we just treat it like any of the other parks, and if we have a problem with it?
I would have a concern with that because it's not designated as a park, it's designated as a public space with no rules attached to it, then our liability comes into question.
And then, and then, I mean, I think if, if council is going to. Consider an alcohol license up there, I mean, I think there has to be. Whether we come up with something barriers, so you can, so if they have an event up there, then. Whatever that area is identified as an, an area where you can sell and serve alcohol, I think you're okay.
Right.
You're gonna have to be able to define those areas, otherwise you're, you're kind of opening it up to the, they could go there. They could have a beer, but they can walk, you know, down to Seventh and Story and.
And would you, would you also entertain with that, is there'd be a minimum insurance policy that has to be held by the.
Alcohol license, absolutely.
Correct. For the event? I mean, I think there's a lot of questions to be answered.
Those rules and regulations stand. I'm just gonna give you round rates and stuff like that, names and.
Okay.
Yeah. Hey, you guys can take.
So what I'm getting is you want, you want the possibility of serving alcohol down there considered, is that correct?
Yeah. Case by. Yes.
Well, if we have, if we have a free concert down there, and we bring in food trucks, that's probably gonna happen.
I don't wanna turn those.
Well, and we have to think about time constraints too, when, when is that gonna close, how late can we stay open?
Right.
Know what I mean? Do we want, we don't want people down there until one, two o'clock in the morning.
Well, the, what's, what's the noise, eleven?
Yes.
Or you somebody here. So eleven P M will be the end of the, the record, is that right?
You can set the hours, right? Yeah, we can set that.
What would you prefer, chief?
I mean, it matches the.
Ten?
Well, but matches the other part hour pretty easy. But like, obviously.
Say eleven.
But we, we know force is consistent across the.
So eleven. But you're gonna get a request to go past eleven unfortunately.
We, we get special permission, remember that's not the, the fact, battle of bands, whatever.
Yeah, well, I think tougher and River Valley may be the exceptions to those rules, but. For a private ground, eleven o'clock's fine, like.
Standard eleven means anything else, could have strict scrutiny.
Yes.
And what about your fees, your fee? Will that go to jail time, because it's not a park, the parks go to jail for a park, I think we gotta work out.
We, we designed it to have it as a fund for the green space, so the money will go back into the green space, it wouldn't fall on parks and it wouldn't fall on any other departments.
Once council decides what those fees are, then we'll have their approval by.
J R, I'll try to get you an email with that fee schedule so that you can, you can take a look at it, see if it coincides with the rest of them. If it falls into place before I propose it again, okay?
Any other council comments, Stephen?
All the comments.
All of them.
If I have a hat over my butt, go out and we can go to the post park. And have a little private party and not have to gain consent boards or whatever.
Yep.
Correct.
Park goes a lot of the time.
But not in the backyard downtown here, many apartments we have. And I have to listen to my buds over there. Get outside. Well, the differences, the differences with parks, if you do that, with this is gonna be, you're gonna have to rent the space. So that, that's gonna, that's gonna keep that from happening. Yes, if I couldn't go down high V and my beer pop all the way back. City Hall. But good question, because that's. Any other public comments, Brian's on the agenda.
I had a counter under comment.
Oh, sorry.
Two downtown business owners reached out to me from A G B C's walkthroughs. Thanking us for the work that they're doing. And one of them specifically said they are watching for that follow up survey so they can get the work done. So just wanted to.
There are nine thousand two hundred thirty feet in line.
Thanks, Lenny.
Thank you. All right, if you have no other comments, it's Stephen and Jerry.